All this meeting of the Conroe Independent School District Board of Trustees to order. Let the record show that a quorum of members is present, that the meeting has been duly called, and the notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meeting Act, Texas Government Code Chapter 551. The time is six o'clock. I'd like to turn some time over to Mr. Sanders for our invocation.
If you would like to stand.
I'm gonna kneel. You know, we have many things going on in our community and our world today. We have injustice and we have inequities. And we have, even locally here, we've been through terrible winter storms and we know many people who are without. And I just ask that we would think about that. And there's a quote that I'd like to read tonight from Pope Paul VI, who talked about people who were witnesses. And what he was trying to say is those were people who did all the talking but didn't do any of the doing. And the quote goes like this. "Modern man listens willingly to witnesses more than teachers. If he does listen to teachers, it is because they are more than witnesses." If you would pray with me. Lord, make us worthy, worthy to serve our fellow man throughout the world who live and die in poverty and hunger. Give them through our hands this day their daily bread. And by our understanding, love, give them peace and joy. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. Ms. Chase will lead us in our pledges.
A pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas side, our pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Ms. Chase. We have item two on our agenda is awards and recognition. The first one we have is special board recognition for the 2021 Texas Music Educators Association All State. Dr. Knoll.
All right. We are pleased to have with us tonight Dr. Bob Horton to make our introductions.
Good evening, President Hubert, Board of Trustees, and Dr. Knoll. My name is Dr. Bob Horton, and I am the coordinator of fine arts. And on behalf of nearly 330 fine arts teachers who impact the 65,000 students in CISD, I want to thank you for your constant support of the arts. Conroe ISD is recognized at the state and national level as a leader in the arts, and this is largely due to your commitment to a well-rounded education which includes high-quality arts experiences. Thank you for giving recognition to the Students in 2021 Texas Music Educators Association, or TMEA, all-state musicians from Conroe ISD. A brief word of explanation. The Texas All-State Competitive Process begins throughout the state with auditions hosted by 33 different TMEA regions. Individual musicians perform selected music for a panel of judges anonymously, who rank each instrument or voice part. And from this ranking, a select group of musicians advances to their region and area levels, and then finally competes at the area level. And the highest-ranking musicians are judged as Texas Music Educators Association, TMEA, All-State students. These students, in a normal year, participate in three days of rehearsals directed by nationally-recognized conductors during the TMEA clinic and convention. This year, these students enjoyed the joy of growth through the process, as there was no in-person TMEA convention, so thank you for the recognition of them tonight. Over 1,700 students are selected through the All-State process that begins from over 50,000 students around the state vying for the honor to become an All-Stater. The top 3.3% of the student musicians who initially auditioned become All-Staters, and 29 of those students are from Conroe ISD. We welcome them, their families, and their teachers virtually to the meeting tonight. As you've seen images of each one of these young people, we certainly want to take a moment to recognize them individually. And we also would like to recognize their outstanding teachers who support these students and who have guided them through the process to become All-State musicians. So their teachers from Conroe High School Choir Evan Key and Emily Eisterhold, from Oak Ridge High School Choir Thomas Kang, from Oak Ridge Band Gerald Dillard, Albert Vela, and Matty Gregory, from College Park Band Jeff Goring, Teresa Martin, and Rob Savala, from the Woodlands High School Choir Patrick Newcomb, Melissa Newhouse, and Elisa West, from the Woodlands Band Joanie Perez, Andy Salmon, and Kyle Witty, the Woodlands Orchestra Erin Michelson and Leah Gordon, and from the Grand Oaks High School Band Mike Flake, Brian Moran, and Jacob Peralas. I know that you've enjoyed seeing these images of these young people, their bright faces. You could tell which ones are seeing your pictures from their mothers and which ones were taken in the hallway by their teachers. And we are so incredibly proud of them, and thank you for this recognition.
Dr. Horton, this is kind of a sad night for me. For the last five years, I've gotten the privilege of getting up here and recognizing these students and shaking their hands and seeing them. And as a musician, my heart's broken a little bit tonight not being able to share in that. We are so proud of you and all the work that those over 300 music educators that you talked about in this district, all the hard work that they put in. And I hope some of them are watching online, I hope these students are watching online, to hear how proud we are of all of you, how much we appreciate your hard work and your dedication. A lot of people don't understand just exactly how much work it takes, how much dedication it takes to get to the level of a TMEA All-State musician. This is not just, you're the best in your band period. This is, you are the best in the state. And I hope that, particularly some of you students that are watching, I hope many of you will choose to pursue music and the arts as a profession. This world needs more beauty. This world needs more love. And you really get that from music and from fine arts education. And once you hear that this board is dedicated to arts education, we understand how important it is to the overall well-being of academic performance, all the studies that show how much music education develops the brain, helps with spatial-temporal learning, and develops young leaders. My first shot at leadership came in a high school band class when a band director was willing to take a shot at me being a student leader. So to all of you that are watching, to all of you here, we are so proud of all that you have done, and that we support you, and we love you, and thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. And Dr. Horton, thank you so much for all you guys do. It's wonderful news. We look forward to it every year of hearing from you guys and unfortunately not getting to see the kids this year, but next year, next year we'll be back. We have another special board recognition tonight. This is our fun, most fun part of the meeting a lot of times, is recognizing the work that you guys do, because it's extremely important and it needs to be recognized. And so item B is special board recognition of child nutrition COVID-19 response. Dr. Knoll.
All right, thank you. You know, as we've been able to do over the last few months, and we will continue this in the coming months, is really recognizing each month a group for the work that they have done throughout this COVID-19 situation to really benefit our community, keep our schools open, keep our schools safe, you know, variety of things that it takes everybody on the team, all 8,500 of us, to make this work on a daily basis. And I think for many of us as educators, we get into this work because we want to be life changers, right? That's what we want to be, have positive impacts on life. And there are some of us that truly, in situations, become lifesavers. And when you think about the work of our Child Nutrition Department, when you think back 10, 11 months ago, when there was no food to be had in the community and many people were without work, the fact that we had a team of people that could bring that life to the, not just the children, but to the community in general, is truly life-saving. And I'll add, you know, this item is particularly about COVID-19, but I would add in our current situation, when you look at the weather situation, we had a dedicated team that made sure that all of our kitchens were up and running so that we could have school yesterday. And yesterday happened, it's not a coincidence, it's a, this is a testament of why we were open and how important the work is. We served more lunches yesterday than we've ever served on a single day in Conroe ISD. So that's an example of this. So I'm gonna... So I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. McCord, who's gonna give our official introduction tonight.
Good evening, President Hubert, members of the board, and Dr. Knoll. I'm here to present to you this evening a special set of employees who have stood out in the last year. The staff members for honoring are cafeteria managers from the Child Nutrition Department. Child nutrition has risen to the occasion over the last year as they quickly pivoted during COVID-19 to accomplish feeding and providing for our children in ways never done before, including providing meals both inside the buildings and at curbside. Managers, if you could please come to the front when I call your name, I will provide more details thanking for your service. First up, Lydia Powell from Conroe High School. Tammy Long from McCullough Junior High. And Nuri Posey from Bush Elementary. Would also like to recognize Juanita Sidell from Candy Creek High School, who cannot be in attendance this evening. When these outstanding cafeteria managers were notified that we were opening curbside feeding sites due to the pandemic, they were up for the challenge and never complained. They quickly sprang into action and began organizing a plan. The amount of inventory needed to prepare for the meals was unbelievable, and it had to be managed carefully for safely, for safety. They had many different employees in and out of the kitchens each day, but they delegated assignments and established good working relationships with all of them. The managers had systems in place to make sure the meals were prepared on time and were accounted for accurately for government guidelines. The managers worked cooperatively with the campus administrators and volunteers at the feeding sites to get the meals to the car lines for distribution to our students and community. They made it look effortless, and they made a real difference at a time it was needed the most. As a result of their hard work and dedication, CISD was able to provide essential breakfast and lunch meals during a very difficult time. Also present this evening are Robin Hughes, Director of Child Nutrition, and Karen Patterson, Assistant Director of Child Nutrition. Thank you for your leadership and guidance each day. I present to you these outstanding CISD employees for recognition this evening.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. President Hubert, fellow board members, Superintendent Knoll, it's truly humbling when I look at folks like this and how tenacious their attitudes are. And I just can't emphasize enough how humbling it is for us to see that you're not just making sandwiches, but that you're feeding children in our district and in our community, especially with the literally unprecedented times we've had placed upon us. To see you're tenacious and stick to your work ethic is just awesome. And I just can't thank you enough. And I'm gonna one more time ask us all to give a round of applause for these people that have earned it so well and done it so well.
Thank you very much. Yes, it is very important. So we appreciate all you guys are doing for all these kids out here and the leadership, and it's just, it's just been phenomenal. So, and as you guys know, other districts are looking at you too and seeing what y'all are doing, so thank you so much. It means a lot. Thank you, Mr. Enman, for your words as well. All right, item three, citizen participation. Ms. Godfrey, has anybody signed up tonight?
No one has signed up.
Okay, very good. Item four, consent agenda. Haven't heard from anybody to pull anything out.
Will it approve the agenda?
Agenda is presented.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? All right, motion passes. Thank you. Item five, administration. Consider adoption of a resolution requesting creation of COVID-19 vaccine allocation Phase 1C for teachers and school district employees.
Yes, sir. Mr. Hubert, we appreciate your leadership on this topic, and we've made a copy of a resolution that I know that we've worked together on, and it is in front of every board member. I'm not sure if we have a copy that we can put up. But I will turn it over to you and allow you to expand upon that.
Sure, thank you very much. So this is, this is something that, we've almost been virtual for a year as time flies. And something that has been told to us as a community and as a nation is, we want to get kids back in schools. We wanna, we want some normality to come back to the kids. They need to, they need to be social again. They need to be in classes, and they need to, they need to be teaching. And the best teaching is whenever teachers are allowed to use all of the different training tools and resources that they have to help the students learn to the best of their ability. And we all support that. And as excited as we were that we've learned so much about COVID-19, and now we have this vaccine that's been coming out, and hospitals have been contacting Conroe ISD to say, hey, can we use your facility? Can we help get these vaccines out to people? And we've been behind that, and will continue to be so. But what was a little alarming to us, and to me specifically, is that there was no creation of a, for teachers to be able to be in the front of the line for the vaccine. And this entire time, I've been hearing our leaders nationally and through the state call our teachers heroes, heroes, you're doing so much, and we're so grateful for everything you do. But yet, when the vaccine comes out, you gotta wait in line like everybody else. And I'm not trying to be critical, but it bothered me, and it bothered us as a board, that there was no action behind the words that were being provided. And so we've talked to, and Dale Enman has talked to him, and Dr. Knoll, and we called our representatives, and Senator Crichton, and Rep. Tooth, and Toth, and Representative Metcalf, and our county commissioners are all behind helping us get teachers on a list. And we're not asking for teachers to be ahead of a lot of the personnel that are there now, our firefighters and our hospital workers and things of that nature, but to give some type of priority, some access to our teachers. And they're all in, they're with us in that, in that fight. So we have put together a resolution, and I'll read it real briefly, and then I'll ask the board to make a motion to accept this. It's a resolution of the Conroe Independent School District Board of Trustees, whereas the COVID-19 pandemic has presented unprecedented challenges to our families, schools, and communities, and whereas schools are essential to the academic, social, and emotional needs of our students, and whereas in-person instruction is critical to maintaining the stability of the economic infrastructure of our communities by allowing parents to go to work and businesses to stay open, and whereas teachers and school district staff should be identified as essential workers because of the vital role they play in the education and development of our children, and whereas the creation of a Phase 1C in the COVID-19 vaccine allocation plan is critical to keeping schools open and the education system intact, is therefore resolved that the Conroe Independent School District Board of Trustees requests that a Phase 1C create, created, provide vaccination for teachers and school district employees as part of their recognition and acknowledgement as essential workers. So that is our resolution, and I put it before the board.
Do I move we adopt their resolution as presented?
Second.
All right, a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? Would anybody like to talk about this at all?
No, I think it's a normal idea.
Thank you so much for presenting this together. Appreciate it. We appreciate this.
All right, very good. We will bring this to a vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? Very good. Thank you very much. The motion passes.
If I may add, thank you. We appreciate your leadership and your genuine concern for our staff. Certainly, I want to echo your remarks in that our leaders here locally have been very supportive of this, and this is, I believe, to give them more, more behind them, to help them with their push. We are trying to do our part as a school district. You may have heard today that we are working with the county to give them access to our Wood Forest Bank Stadium site to increase the number of vaccines that can be given to all citizens in the county. And hopefully, at some point, you know, we'll have an opportunity to have a Conroe ISD event there, and we'll be doing all of our staff members. But we have been able to work with local leaders, and I believe we've, we've worked through many of our teachers that also fall in that 1B category for their own health reasons, and we've been able to get them access, and that's been appreciated, that local hospitals in the county have worked with us on that. But we do look forward to the day of getting all of them vaccinated. But just on behalf of all the employees, it means a lot to us that you would step out and do this, so we thank you very much.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Very good. All right, and I, by the end of the meeting, we'll have the resolution signed by all the board members, and we'll turn that into Ms. Galatas or to you and move forward that.
Yes, sir.
Very good.
And we'll then mail that to all of our local leaders so that they'll have it as well.
Very good. Thank you. All right, item B, receive information regarding the campus mascot and school colors of Hope Elementary School. Dr. Knoll. Okay, well, Dr. Debbie Phillips will share this.
Good evening, President Hubert, Dr. Knoll, members of the board. We are really getting excited about the...
Yes.
Okay. We are really getting excited about the future opening of Hope Elementary. We're now to the point where it's time to select a mascot and the school colors. Principal Gilberto Lozano has sent out a survey to the future Hope family, and they've asked them for their suggestions. So the top candidates, the top choices that the kids came up with were the Huskies, the Sharks, the Hornets, and the Tigers. Tonight, we want to present to you the direction we are headed for informational purposes, and then next month we'll come back for your final approval. So let me introduce to you our Hope Husky. You'll notice the colors, isn't that cute? You'll notice the colors will be red and black, which blend nicely with our Candy Creek feeder, and you'll also find nice pops of red and black in the new school decor as well. So we'll be back next month for your approval. Are there any questions or feedback? All right.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. Appreciate your consideration.
Thank you, Dr. Phillips. Item C, 5C, receive information regarding the development of the teacher incentive allotment program.
And you'll recall that we've talked about this teacher incentive allotment a few times, we had workshops and in board meetings, and it continues to progress. It is no less complicated today than it has been on any of the other times that we have shared it with you. But here tonight to update us on our progress, and we do have a lot of great people working on this, is Ms. Polegreen.
Good evening, President Hubert, members of the board, and Dr. Knoll. This evening, we come to give you a brief overview of where we are as a district and the progress we're making in the development of our local teacher incentive allotment program. And while I have the opportunity to stand before you and present this information, as Dr. Knoll said, there is a big group of people that is working on this and really trying to help us make good decisions for a plan to present to you. So as we get ready to get started, we want to take you back to why we're doing this. And as we've shared before, this came out of House Bill 3. And with this, the state is wanting for us to have an allotment system in place that will help ensure that the most effective teachers, that we are able to attract them and retain them in the classroom at our hardest-to-staff campuses. And by going through this processing, putting in a plan in place, we'll be ensured to be able to have more of an equitable distribution of effective teachers across our district. So we started looking at, what does that look like for us as a goal? And what we deem to be our goal is that we want to recruit, retain, and reward the best teachers at our campuses with the highest needs. And along with that, we want to encourage professional development and growth of our teachers. So we're gonna start sharing with you what that's going to look like, or what we're recommending that it looks like. So we've talked about, there are three designations that teachers can earn going through this process. And those designations are recognized, exemplary, and master. And each one of these designations have a certain amount of earning potential associated with them. Teachers earning the recognized designation could earn from $3,000 to $9,000. The exemplary designation, $6,000 to $18,000. And the master designation, $12,000 to $32,000. The amount of funding that a teacher can receive is based on three factors. One, the designation level that they earn. Two, the socioeconomic needs of the students that attend the campus. And the third criteria is if we have campuses that are classified as rural, which we don't. So for us, as we're developing our plan, we're going to be looking at the designation levels that a teacher earns, and we'll be looking at the socioeconomic needs of a campus. So the thing that you want to keep in mind is, the more socioeconomic the students are that attend that school, the higher funding that a teacher would receive based on the designation that they earn. There are two pathways that a teacher can earn designations. The first one is the National Board Certification. This is a certification that an individual teacher can earn based upon professional development that, an assessment that they go through. And if they have this certification, they are automatically participating in this plan. They would come in at the recognized designation, and they are eligible to begin receiving funding this school year, 2020, 2021. And they would still be eligible to earn higher designations under the district-created plan. And the plan that we, the other option that we want to talk about tonight is the local plan that we are charged with creating for our district. So under the local plan, it's really important that as we create this plan, that we have as much engagement from our stakeholders as possible. And we've really worked at creating a good plan for that. We've put in systems so that our teachers can also provide feedback. So under the district-created plan, in order to be eligible, a teacher would have to be working at the participating campuses and working in the identified grade levels and subjects. So I want to talk about the layered approach that we're taking to try to get feedback as we develop this system. We have what's called our steering committee, and that is made up of our administrators. And then we have a stakeholder committee, and as you can see here, this membership is made up of teachers, campus administrators, central administration, and also community members. We are providing webinars that are shared across the district. We've got three of them that are scheduled, and through that, we are providing information to our teachers and providing a platform through our teacher incentive allotment webpage that they can ask questions, and also go there to seek information about what this process is. We have also surveyed our teachers and given them an opportunity to provide information about certain components that would be a part of the plan. So as we walk through this process of completing the application, there are three big components that we have to make sure are included and answered in a fashion that's acceptable to the state. Number one, we have to determine who can earn a designation. Number two, how they will earn that designation. And then number three, how and when will teachers receive compensation for those designations? Compensation is state-funded. This is not a local piece, so it is dependent upon the funding that the state is able to provide for this. And as we get ready to talk about each of these in greater detail, I want to say, we don't have all the answers tonight. We're still working with all of our groups to get that finalized, to present to you hopefully next month. So question number one, who can earn a designation? There are two parts that make up this question. One, eligible campuses, and then two, what would be the teaching assignments that would be eligible? So working with our stakeholder committee, our recommendation that eligible campuses that would be able to participate would be those with 70% or greater economically disadvantaged students. We feel like this aligns with the root of this program, which is to get the most effective teachers at your most challenged staffing schools. So when looking at that, there are 15 schools that make up this group, and you can see that they range across elementary through high school. And this would be our recommendation for Phase 1. And we're calling it Phase 1 because if approved by the state to... And we're calling it Phase 1 because if approved by the state to participate, each year, the goal would be to bring on more campuses and to look at how to include more teaching assignments. So we're calling this Phase 1 of our recommendations. So the second part of this is which teaching assignments would be eligible in Phase 1. And we had the opportunity to talk with our stakeholders again, and the majority of us agree that the eligible teaching assignments, we would be looking at grades K-1, 2, and then grades 3 through 8, looking at reading and math. Fifth and 8th, not 5th through 8th, but 5th and 8th, science. 8th grade, social studies. And then our EOCs, which would be Algebra 1, English 1, English 2, U.S. History and Biology. But the most important question is, would we expand this if approved? And the answer is yes. So each year, we would be looking at how to bring on additional players. So in this, we have to define who is classified as a classroom teacher, because that's what this plan says. It is geared towards keeping teachers in the classroom. So according to PMS, a classroom teacher is defined as someone who works 90 days at 100% of the day or 180 days at 50 to 99% of the day. And that's how they're compensated. And then we've had the question many times, and we want to answer it, is are other teachers, other than the teacher of record, eligible to participate in this? And the answer would be yes, and we're going to talk a little bit more about the definition of that. But the answer would be yes, and an example of that would be a special education teacher who pushes in and provides support in the general ed classroom. So that would be one example of, you know, how that would look. So how will we designate? This is question number two. So components have to be included in this plan in order for designations to be assigned. The state says that we must include teacher observation, and for our district, that's TTEST. And we must include some student growth measure. Those are required to be a part of the designation system. So we're going to talk about student growth in just a little bit. But it also gives the option of us including other factors if we wanted to as we're developing how we're going to measure the performance of our teachers. So as I stated earlier, we were looking for how to get feedback from our teachers. So we did do a survey, and our survey included questions about student growth measures. You know, what do you deem to be good measures of student growth? And we also looked for feedback from our teachers on other components we could include besides the two that are required. So we took this information to our stakeholder group, and along with the information from our survey, the recommendation for the observation tool that we would use, of course, would be TTEST, because that's the one that we have, and it is approved by the state. But we talked a lot about student growth measures and what would be the best one to use in Phase 1, because the thing that we are held accountable for in this application process is anything that we include must be able to pass the test of being reliable and valid. So the recommendation that we have and feedback from our stakeholder group is that we use pre-test and post-test to measure our student growth. And we'll give more information to you about what that would look like. But that's the recommendation we're making for that piece. So the third question in the big three comes to compensation. And we talked about this before in our previous meetings, that the state requires that 90% of the funds generated by a teacher that has a designation, that it goes towards teacher compensation. So we would, we are recommending that the other 10% goes towards all of the administrative pieces that are going to go into having to maintain this whole process. So our recommendation, and also approved in agreement with our stakeholder committee, is that 90% of the compensation that's received, that it goes to the teacher that earns the designation. And then we're clarifying what's going to happen with that 90%. Of that 90%, the designated teacher would receive 92% of that, and the other 8% would go towards all the benefit costs that are associated with that payout. And again, we'll provide more information next month. So what does the timeline look like for us being able to complete this process, bring a recommendation to you for your approval, and then get approved by the state? So right now, we're in the pre-application process. We're developing our system, and we're working with our stakeholders. We will submit the application to the state with your approval by April 15 of this year. And once approved by the state, next school year, 2021, 2022, we would begin to gather data so that we can determine which teachers earn designations and then be ready to do compensation in the spring of 2023. And to show that this cycle continues, the postapproval part is we then look at who do we bring on? So the big picture timeline, we've shared this with you before. We've talked with you all about, you know, what the teacher incentive allotment is and the value it has for our district to participate in this process for our teachers. We've shared information with our district-level planning committee. We also have the stakeholder group that we're working with and also providing teachers an opportunity to provide feedback to us. So our goal is that for the March board meeting, that we present to you a recommendation for your approval, and with that, we will apply by April 15. Our next district-wide webinar to share information with all of our teachers is March 4. And with that, we take those webinars and the presentation, and we make that a part of our teacher incentive allotment webpage so that people can go out at any time and access that information. So as we get ready to prepare for the board meeting next month, we want to be able to bring more information to you to answer the big three questions and with that, seek your approval. Here's our goal, we must have the best. And that's the end of today's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Green at this point? I had one quick question for you that I wrote down. On the measuring stick or the measuring, you said it was going to be a pre-test and a post-test. What tests, would that be like, the EOC test? Or is that, would it be a classroom test that you would make up? Like, who would control that test and the information on it?
So, and to get into the really good part of it, we'll let Dr. Taylor talk about that. But with our star test degree levels, we would be using that assessment for our pre- and post-test.
Okay.
And we'll develop how that would roll out. For kindergarten first and second, there is a state-developed assessment called M-Class. And then, of course, for the upper grades, we would be using end-of-course assessments.
Okay, very good, thank you. All right, thank you, Ms. Green.
Thank you, Ms. Green.
All right, item 6A, consider approval of guaranteed maximum price amendment for the Conroe High School Master Plan Phase 2 project and authorize the superintendent to negotiate and execute the contract documents.
All right, Mr. Foster.
That's how he does it right there, huh?
Stylish.
Next level.
His wife lays it out, he puts it on.
Let's hope we stay with those smiles. President Hubert, I'm sorry. Members of the board. It is my pleasure to bring forward for your consideration and approval the Guaranteed Max Price Amendment for our Conroe High School Master Plan Phase 2 project, which is born out of our 2019 bond referendum. So if you recall, back in January of 2020, you, our board of trustees, selected Ellisor Constructors to be the district's construction manager at risk for the Conroe High School project. Since then, we've been working with Ellisor and PBK, our design firm, to complete the scope of this project and work with them to put together a guaranteed maximum price for your approval tonight of $144,998,625. At this time, we're requesting your approval.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Ms. Nace, we have a second, thank you for that. Any questions or discussion?
I just have a question. In comparison to the overall scope of the project, how does that dollar amount come in? Is it over, under? I just, I read a lot about increased prices for all sorts of supplies and materials and labor. And I'm just trying to understand. I know we had originally an amount designated for the entire scope, Phase 1 and Phase 2.
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm just trying to understand, are we in line with that? Are we out of line with that? Where are we at?
All right, so for this particular project, we are a little bit out of alignment with what our original intent was.
Okay.
So when we went to the voters in 2019, the bond project for Conroe High School wasn't intended to increase the capacity, the student capacity of Conroe High School.
Correct.
So when you base, if we designed the project around the intended 3,300 student capacity, we would generally be, generally speaking, be on target.
Okay.
Now, this project, the price we're bringing for approval increases the capacity of Conroe High School to 4,300. So, and we're going to look at a project next in our agenda item, which is for 1,000 students, which is approximately $30 million. So if you look at those two, you know, the measuring stick is there.
That's where I was a little bit when I was looking at everything. I couldn't recall because I didn't have the data with me, what it was about. But it seemed like it was a lot more. But I didn't think about the adding of the additional students as well.
Yes, sir.
So by far, that's going to be our largest high school in our district.
It already is.
I know it already is.
But yes.
I know it is, but it's by little, not by far.
Yeah, part of the reason for that scope change is the continued rapid growth of both Conroe High School and Canyon Creek High School. I think the original thought with our demographic study was that when the next bond cycle, whenever that is, we'll have another high school. We'll build that new high school. The original thought was that will split, it would split Conroe High, right? But at that point, Conroe High is probably going to be at 6,000 kids.
Right.
If not more. And so we thought that we could split it and go to 3,000 and build a new high school for 3,000. We would be fine. But with the, since the bond, the amount of development that's occurring in the Canyon Creek feeder zone is really exploded. And so the reality of the new high school is we're going to have to probably pull kids from Canyon Creek as well as Conroe High, meaning we're not going to be able to pull as many from Conroe High as we would have originally liked to do. So it made financial sense here to give ourselves those extra high school seats because it was economical to do that. The other benefit is if we build it big enough, if we are able to split still and fit 9 through 12 into the main campus at Conroe High at some point, it gives us Conroe 9 as a potential for reverting back to a junior high, which was its original purpose. And as you know, we opened Stockton this year, but both Stockton and Pete each only have about 125 seats available before they're full. So this was the way to give us flexibility, and it's the most economical way to give us that flexibility. So we kind of took that as an opportunity to do that.
Thank you, Dr. Noel.
So my follow-up question to that would be, this is coming out of bond money that's been appropriated. Are we having to sacrifice another project on that bond, on that bond list?
No, during the course of this planning process, we've been working with Dr. Noel and Mr. Rice in finance to make sure that we were allocated correctly. So we've got the bond for the project allocated funds. We've got bond contingency, which we're applying here as well. And we've got some old bond funds because we're trying to marry some ADA concerns across the entire site that make up the funding here. So we believe the funds for this asked tonight exist as we presented it. So it should be, it's not sacrificing any other projects in our future as we're bringing them for approval. And up to this point, I mean, with, we've had, we brought to you a little bit of expanding scope at York, if you remember back about a year ago. But we were under a budget at College Park, so that evened out. And then all of our other projects have hit our budget targets to this point. So this is, you know, from a forecasting standpoint, we're in pretty good shape relative to what we've got left to complete in the 2019 bond.
Okay, very good, thank you. All right, any other questions? Seeing none, we have a call to vote. All those in favor? All right, any opposed? Very good, passes, thank you, Mr. Foster. Moving to item B, consider approval of guaranteed maximum price amendment for the new elementary in the Conroe High School feeder zone, Flex 21 project, and authorize the superintendent to negotiate and execute contract document. Dr. Noel.
Okay, Ms. Foster.
Again, at this time, we bring forth your consideration and approval of the Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment for our new elementary school in the Conroe High feeder zone, which is, we refer to as Flex School Number 21. So it's out off of McHale Road on the west side of the district. So if you recall, back in April, we selected, April of 2020, we selected, you, our board, selected Duratec to be our construction manager at risk for this project. Since then, they've been working with our design team, the IBI Group and Conroe ISD, to develop the Guaranteed Maximum Price for this work. And we've developed a price for approval of $29,625,679. Again, at this time, we're requesting your approval.
All right.
So move.
We have a motion?
A second question.
We have a second. All right, any other discussion or questions for Ms. Foster?
Yes, sir.
I have a question, K through 6?
This one is currently scheduled as a K through 6.
K through 6.
We're still.
It would still be kind of on that same Stewart model.
It is, and you know, Dr. Hines and I are still having conversations. We haven't started the zoning process yet. Likely to be a K-6, but we will, you know.
Could be a pre-K.
Could be a pre-K through 4, could be. We need to work with Stewart to make sure we can give enough relief to Stewart while also that there's enough students coming from the east to get into the school to populate it appropriately. I don't know if you want to add.
Yeah, I'll just say, I mean, one of the challenges as we work on this is just, you know, we're not large enough yet to need that intermediate school.
Right.
And so.
But it's close.
But we're getting there.
Yeah.
Moving towards that size, but we really don't have enough. And so we're looking at different options. Plus, it's going to be challenging the way we draw the split out there. And so we're playing with different models at this point. We're not far enough along really to be able to say, here's our plan. But regardless of what we do, it will be to solve the crowding at Stewart and give us some capacity for future growth.
Is Stewart a pre-K designated as pre-Ks?
It is.
It is, okay, I thought so. And so it may remain or it may not?
Correct, you know, so.
Depending on how you decide on.
Programs could change. We could have pre-K at one location.
Okay, okay.
We could have certain programs that are only available at one location. And that's one way we do it. We're just playing with different models at this point.
Okay.
And it could be possible, this is not a model that we've used in the past, but it's something that we've talked about where one of those schools is a K-6, one's a K-4. And then the 5th and 6th graders would all go to the other place for intermediate.
Well, I know with the new development down 2,854.
Correct, it's kind of.
You're going to get overwhelmed and overloaded quickly with seat capacity.
Indeed.
Quick.
Which is why there's room for another school on that site.
Yes, we.
Right, I know, I know, I know. We've got a big enough site, I know that. Yeah, because we originally talked about that could be a junior high. That's not going to work.
Probably not.
Yeah, but you could have a middle school.
Right.
Got you, okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? All right, call to vote, all those in favor? All right, any opposed? Very good, passes, thank you, Mr. Foster. Item C, consider and approve the selection of the construction manager at risk for the Campus Renovation 2022 project and authorize the superintendent to negotiate and execute the construction manager at-risk documents.
All right, Ms. Foster.
All right, this time, we're bringing forward for your approval the selection of a construction manager at risk for our Campus Renovations 2022. So Campus Renovations, you recall, is where we undertake the lifecycle replacement of things that wear out over time in a major or invasively maintenance-oriented items. So DLR Group is our design firm for this. They helped us by putting together an RFQ, which is step one. A response to the RFQ is step one of our two-step selection process. We had six companies respond to our initial request for qualifications. Our committee reviewed those six responses, and the law will only allow us to interview or bring into step two no more than five. So somebody had to get cut. There was a statistical break in the points for three. So we brought, invited three in for step two. Those three submitted pricing based on our criteria. And then we had evaluated those as a committee, totaled the scores. And at this time, we feel that GTT Contractors, Inc., is the offerer, submits the proposal determined to be the best value for the district based on our. based on our published criteria and the ranking evaluation. So like always, our ranking is made a part of your item as well, so you can see the top three scores and how they weren't, ran out there. And this time, we're requesting your approval of GTT as our contract, the construction manager at risk for this job.
I move approval as presented.
Have a motion? And we have a second. Any, any questions? All right. All those in favor? Any opposed? Very good. Unanimous. Passes. Thank you, Mr. Foster.
If I may, Mr. Hubert, I, I wanna just congratulate the board on, these are proactive measures. And this is a work that is done kinda with our planning, construction, but also with our maintenance teams to, to make these determinations. And it's, this constant reinvestment in our facilities is why our facilities fared so well through this last storm. That, that we don't have parts that get worn out to the point of failure and, and they can't, we couldn't be ready to open school. So this is, it, it's proactive, but it's very smart. And I, I thank you, and I thank the boards that sat here previously that had made these decisions to continuously reinvest because it, it does absolutely pay dividends for us. So thank you.
This one in particular, because you're working with maintenance and you're, you're working with schools and, and to have a company like GTT that we've done business with, that knows us, that knows our campuses, I think that is invaluable as well. I mean, I, I can understand wanting to ring in others, but it, something like that one, because you've got a ti, you've got a timeline, too. If you miss your timeline, we, we can't have school. And so I think it's very good.
GTT continues to do it at a very competitive rate.
Absolutely. They do a great job.
We're not having to pay a premium to bring that familiarity in.
That's right. That's right.
And, and we've also made some decisions, and they, architects never, I don't think we have any architects here, but they never like it when I use the term "value engineer." But when we start value engineering work, one of the places that we never cut costs on are the mechanicals. That we still put in top-rate mechanicals in our buildings, but for this very reason. And I think that's another area that is smart for us. There, there are short-term places to save money.
Sure.
But you would pay for it for the next twenty years. It's smarter that we, we, we make the right decision in front.
Tending wise and pound foolish.
Indeed.
Yep.
Very good. Thank you. All right, Mr. Foster. It was turned to item D, receive capital improvement update.
All right. Well, at this time, I would like to bring you up to speed and give you an update on things we have underway throughout the district. We're gonna start with Hope Elementary School, which is scheduled to open in August for school for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. So it is on schedule. And as we begin to see, last month, the exterior of the building doesn't really change month to month right now because it is about ninety percent complete. The masonry work is essentially done, and the next big scope is the metal roof of the main entry. And then as we get into the spring and summer, you'll start to see green grass growing around the building. But you can see from the details around the front door, we're getting ready to, to make the approaches into the, the main building and seal up the front doors with the permanent aluminum storefronts. Now, on the inside, you'll start to see those pops of red and black to match the, the feeder zone colors. So this school, Hope Elementary, is, like I said, on schedule, and it's scheduled to open in August. So Runyon Elementary, this will be our last update for Runyon because I'm happy to report that all the classrooms and all the spaces are occupied by children. They're being used every day now. So we, the primary purpose was to give them a dedicated gym. And doing so, we were able to recapture some space in their, their existing library, give them a new actual library space, recapture the old library for classrooms, and reorganize their pre-K section of their building to give them more pre-K and life skills classrooms. So overall, the fit and function of Runyon Elementary has been improved a great deal, and the teachers and students are using it at its full capacity right now. Moving on to York Junior High School, where we're doing a building addition to increase the overall capacity. So when we're done, York Junior High's student capacity should be right at two thousand students. So the, a building addition basically spans the entire back of the building. So you can see the, the building structure is in, and it's nearing its dried-in phase. It is scheduled to be open for students when they return from the summer break in August. So we're working on the inside of the building as they're wrapping up the outside of the building equipment. So you can see partitions and mechanical equipment being installed, insulated, things of that nature. And then on the inside, you know, the main corridors and everything are, are coming together. So that building is on schedule, and we will turn it over for use for the students in August. So the Woodlands College Park High School, which is a building addition so that we can reduce our reliance on portables on the campus. Again, it's nearing its dried-in state. You can see the windows in and the scaffold up for the masonry on the outside. So on the inside of that building, again, you're seeing partitions and building systems and mechanical equipment is being installed and activated currently. I mean, so that building is also on schedule, and it'll open in August when the students return from the summer break as well. Then at the Woodlands High School, again, it's a building addition to help us reduce our reliance on portables. Much like York and College Park, it is scheduled to open in August, and it is on schedule. See, the roofing here is near complete, and the exterior masonry is underway. So you can see the scan of that building being constructed as we speak. And then on the inside, again, partitions and mechanical equipment and plumbing lines, things of that nature are being installed. So it is on schedule, again, scheduled to turn over in August for the students when they return from summer. So this is our Campus Renovations Twenty-One project, so the work is underway. So Armstrong is our major scope currently, where we're, the main process there is to renovate the kitchen to give ourselves a more efficient, more functional kitchen space. And in order to do so, we need to do a building addition. So we're building new classrooms so we can take over some of the existing classrooms to help make that kitchen space more efficient. So they've been working in the underground. That's why you don't see a whole lot above the ground here. But the underground utilities are in, and the next scope work is working on foundations for the structural components that will be arriving in the very near future, and it'll go, become vertical. And it is scheduled to be open in August when we return from the summer break as well. Creighton overhaul, is the Creighton Elementary overhaul, is a, is another campus renovation-style project, but it's more invasive than the typical overhaul of campus. So this is roof, this is air conditioning, this is fire sprinklers, this is first responders' systems and video systems, security systems, access control. We're replacing doors and frames in a portion of that building that, when they were originally built, did not, we didn't have TDLR and ADA requirements when that building was built. So we're bringing all, most of that campus back in, or bringing it into compliance with current ADA standards. So you can see the work going on right now is the roof replacement, so it is moving along very well. And then off-site, or not off the building site anyway, is the foundation work for the new groundwater storage tank that will be required to function to, for the fire sprinkler system that's being added to the building to function. So the foundation work for that new well expansion and pump house are, are underway currently. That project is, is on schedule, and it's got a, a weird schedule because of that fire tank system. It's a very, very long lead time and procurement item. So we're actually gonna be at Creighton and cover two summers. So we'll have a lot of work ramp up for this summer. It'll scale back during the school year, and then it'll ramp up again next summer. But we're scheduled to finish that project in August of twenty-two. Now, our new junior high in the Caney Creek feeder zone, so this is squeezed in between Grangerland, Mylum, and Caney Creek High School. So it's on a sixty-two acre site. As you can see from our picture here, the site is cleared. And the light tan dirt up in the top of the screen is the building pad where they're working on the drilled and under-ring foundations for the building now. And you can see the big puddle in the middle, which is our current storage for the Samo McGiddin runoff from last week. It's the new detention system for that, for that campus. And when we talk about detention for that campus, we're talking about detention from Mylum all the way to Morehead Junior High across the street on fourteen eighty-five. Where our goal here is to improve the drainage for the entire complex. And in doing so, we'll get to a picture of it in a second. This is the foundation work. So you can see the plywood on the ground is actually covering holes that are waiting to be filled by that nice concrete truck sitting there. And then the detention work. So you can see the size and scale of the pond we are constructing there. I mean, in the far, far end of that picture is a dump truck that hauls about twenty-five tons of dirt at a time. I mean, so you can see, it's, it's a very large and very well-improved detention system for that complex. So it is on schedule. So we're gonna be on that site until August of twenty-three. And included in that is work for the East County Transportation Project, which will also open when the school opens in twenty-three. Moving on to Conroe High School, which we just got our approval on the master plan project, so I really appreciate your approval on that. And so allow us to continue with this work. A couple of months ago, you approved a change order to the first phase from the 2015 bond project so that we can get a jump start on things to help us make good use of the spring. So you're looking at the, the roadwork that goes around the north side of the site. So at the end of this summer, we'll have a new bus loop and new bus parking area and band practice area for the, for the campus to be able to get the buses out of the middle of the construction, move them to the perimeter of the building, and help us deal with the parent and student pickup and drop off more effectively during construction. And this will actually be the permanent location for the bus loop, so it's not wasted work. It's just the first stage in a fifty-four-month-long project. So we're gonna be here for a pretty good while. It is currently on schedule. Scheduled to open in twenty twenty-five. We're looking here at a picture of the former location of the bleachers for the JV football field. So we have to, we had to dismail those, so we could make the road pass by this location. But we've also retained all those components. We're trying to reuse everything that's good on that campus in the new project to be as effective with our taxpayer dollars as we can. So we've retained all those items, and they'll be incorporated into the new bleachers on the new JV stadium when it's built. So moving on to our teacher training center. So this is the teacher training center at the end of the north end zone of Woodford Stadium. So you see from our red picture, we've got the, the driveway and the parking lot area cut out for the footprint of the building. On the wings of the, of the pavement, you can see the, the dusted areas where they've sawed the concrete to allow us to connect all the sanitary utilities from the visitor side to the home side because they currently pass right directly underneath the new building location. So we're gonna reorganize all that stuff so it is functional for any events that we have later in the spring. So all that work is happening currently. And then they're working on excavating for the building pad as we speak. And so next month, we hope to show you some nice, pretty dirt in that location as we get ready to move the foundations. We'll be on this site for about twelve months. As we work around the, the seasons of football and soccer and everything else, we, we say about twelve months because we know school functions are more important than the, the building itself. So we're having to accommodate lots of, lots of things there. But it's a twelve-month project. It is currently on schedule. And that is our update.
All right. Very good. Thank you very much, Mr. Foster.
Thank you.
Moving on to seven-edged feeder award of RFP twenty-eleven oh one, Furniture for Hope Elementary.
All right. Mr. Reeves, forward for these next three items?
Did you tell EZ to call me, Dr. Reeves? I did not. I thought that was a payback. I just wanna make sure I didn't make that slip, so. Good evening, President Hubert, members of the board and Dr. Noel. Tonight, we are recommending that the board considers awarding RFP number twenty-dash-eleven-dash-zero-one, Furniture for Hope Elementary, to Educators Depot and Indico Sales for an estimated annual expenditure of six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Requests and proposals pertaining to the purchase and installation of Furniture for Hope Elementary for the district were emailed to registered vendors through the electronic e-bidding system and advertised on the Conroe ISD purchasing website multiple times in the carrier. Prices will be effective for one year through February two thousand twenty-two. Automatic renewing annually for two additional one-year terms through February two thousand twenty-four. And shall include all costs of complete services required. We had eight vendors submit a response. Proposals were evaluated by the CISD Teaching and Learning Department and reviewed by the Purchasing Department. Funds are provided in the Capital Projects Fund. Recommendation for awards is noted on the attached analysis, and at this time, we request your approval.
All right. Do we have a motion?
So move.
No motion?
Second.
A second. Any discussion? All right. Seeing none. Call to vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Reeves. And moving to B, consider award of CSP twenty-twelve oh one, Internal Connection Campus Refresh E-Rate.
All right. Once again, we're requesting that the board considers approval of CSP number twenty-dash-twelve-dash-zero-one, Internal Connections or Campus Refresh for the E-Rate to Datavox, Inc., for an estimated expenditure of two-point-four million dollars. Notifications of proposal pertaining to the purchase of internal connections for the twelve-campus Technology Refresh Project were distributed to potential service providers by filing Form four-seventy through the USAC e-file system. The proposal was advertised on the CSE purchasing website and also two times in the courier. Under this CSP, internal connections for the campuses will consist of any combination of the following items: wireless access points, routers, switches, racks for routers and switches, phones, uninterrupted power supply, and any cabling and cabling components related to the installation and operation of these devices. Three vendors submitted proposals with one submitting a qualifying bid response. Pricing for this project shall be effective upon board award through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two, and shall include all costs of complete services required. Under E-Rate guidelines for E-Rate eligible items, work may begin April first, two thousand twenty-one. Proposals were evaluated by members of the Technology Department and reviewed by the Purchasing Department. Best value offers are recommended for board approval and noted on the attached summary. Fundal will be provided in the Capital Projects Fund, and at this time, we request your approval.
All right. Do we have a motion?
Move.
We have a motion. A second?
My second's motion.
All right. Motion, second. Any discussion? Questions?
I have, I have a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
I, I've read through this, and I'm not a technology person.
I brought them just in case.
Good. I need to talk to one of them. I mean, I know, are we bringing fiber optic inter, I, I'm just trying to understand what we're paying for?
This, this is more of a.
Or is it more, because I know we talked about phones and racks and routers. I understand what those are.
Yeah, this is more gear that's at the campus. Switches, internal stuff, not the connections to the campus right now.
So it's at the campus, not getting to the campus?
Correct.
Okay. And we're covering how many campuses?
It was twelve.
Twelve. Okay. That's what I thought. So this is just, I mean, they have something there. It's just old technology?
It's old stuff we're gonna replace.
Are we able to get any kind of recycle?
We, we use the stuff till it's basically ready to go to collection.
I got, okay, okay. It's not even good for a trot line waiter. Okay. I, I, I'm not suggesting that, no. Okay. All right. I just wanted to understand. So we're really, we're just replacing that technology? How long has that technology been there that we're replacing?
Um, at least six years, I would say, or seven or eight.
Six or seven or eight. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Very good. All right. Any other questions? Seeing none. Call to vote. All those in favor? All right. Any opposed? Very good. Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Reeves. We will go to C. Item C, consider award of RFP twenty-twelve oh six, Musical Instrument and Supplies.
Once again, we're requesting that the board considers awarding RFP number twenty-dash-twelve-dash-zero-six, which is for musical instruments and supplies, to the attached vendors for an annual estimated expenditure of seven hundred thousand dollars. Requests and proposals pertaining to the purchase of new musical instruments, equipment, and supplies for the district were emailed to registered vendors through the electronic e-bidding system. It was purch, it's advertised on the purchasing website and is also in the Conroe Courier. Unit pricing was requested for new instruments and supplies through February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two. We had thirty vendors that submitted bid responses. These proposals were evaluated by the CISD Finance Department and reviewed by the Purchasing Department. Funds for the purchase of new instruments and supplies are provided in the CISD General Fund and Capital Projects Fund. Best value offers are recommended for board award, and at this time, we request your approval.
All right. You have a motion?
So move.
You have a motion? You have a second?
Second.
You have a second. Very good. Any questions?
Yes, sorry. I, I'm not trying to beat up on anybody, but I know in our last internal audit meeting, we had a lot of discussion about missing band instruments. Are, are any of these for new campuses, or are we expanding classrooms?
These will be for future campuses, so any, so this bid lasts, and this is what we purchased those instruments for.
Okay.
Any supplemental things that come up through each school?
And I assume we're replacing some. Is that right, Dr. Horton? Okay. I, I just, I just, I just wanna say it publicly. I, I hope we do a much better job this time on, because we're spending a lot of money on band instruments. And I agree with Mr. Moore. I love the arts, and I want our students to be able to participate and have the best equipment available. But I want us to do a good job of keeping up with it and make sure that we don't end up in the paper again on the front page saying it's missing, when it probably wasn't missing. We just couldn't identify it.
Yes, sir.
So, all right. Thank you. Sorry. Sorry, Mr. Reeves.
That's all right.
Any other questions?
I'm glad you asked that, Ms. Sanders, because I know I, I saw Ms. Chase jump up as well because she was in the Audit Committee, too.
Yes.
Thing is thing, thing. Very good. Okay. Seeing no other questions. Call to vote. All those in favor? Very good. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Reeves. Appreciate it. And item D, receive financial reports.
All right. Ms. Garza.
Ms. Garza.
Good evening, President Hubert, members of the board, and Dr. Noel. It is my pleasure this evening to present the financial statements for January thirty-first, two thousand twenty. Our first statement this evening is the balance sheet. The balance sheet shows the district's assets, liabilities, and fund balance. Presented here this evening are the general fund, the debt service fund, child nutrition, and self-funded insurance. Taking a closer look at cash and investments in the general fund, we have total cash of three hundred and ninety-two-point-one million dollars, the majority of that being in the state pools at three hundred and three-point-seven million dollars. Debt service has a hundred and five-point-two million dollars, child nutrition, two-point-two, and self-funded insurance, nine-point-seven. Next statement is our income statement. The income statement shows the district's revenues and expenditures. In the general fund, total revenue year-to-date of four hundred and five million dollars. In debt service, eighty-nine-point-six million. We did process our second, our first debt payment for the year before the storm hit, thankfully, in the amount of seventy-three million dollars. So you will see that reflected next month on the income statement. Child nutrition. Child Nutrition, total revenue for the year of $6.6 million, and Self-Funded Insurance, $23.1 million. Our 2019 bond referendum, total funds encumbered and expended year to date is $153.9 million, leaving $482.5 remaining. Self-funded insurance, year-to-date, we have total revenue of $22.2 million, total expense of 22, just over 22 million, so we are positive for the year at $233.5 million. Visits at the Wellness Center are averaging 348 a month. And our investments as of January 31, par value at $815.2 million. Our pools are yielding .143. Our short-term investments are at 168 days with average maturity, yielding .255. Our longer-term investments with TCG are yielding 1.304. Our combined portfolio has a WHAM of 34 days, yielding .223 compared to our 90-day T-bill, which is our benchmark at .06.
Ms. Garza, aren't you seeing or beginning to see some increase in our interest revenue? I mean, we had a quarter-point bump in the 10-year in the last month.
Yes, slight, slight revenue increase, yes.
Okay, so you are beginning to see it in the pools as well?
The pools are, last week, they were at like 12, yes.
They're usually dragging a little bit, yeah, because they're 60 days.
Our largest pool, Lone Star, was at like 12 basis points, so we are seeing steady.
So it should be coming, though?
Yes, and plus tax collections are here now, so.
Absolutely, yeah.
We've got that increase.
Perfect time to try to help offset some of our tax rate. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Garza. Appreciate it. Item eight, executive session. A closed session of the board will now be held on the matters contained in the notice for this meeting as authorized by Section 551.071 and 551.074 of the Texas Open Meeting Act. Does the board determine that any action, final action, final decision, or final vote be required with regard to any matter considered in such closed or executive meeting or session? Then such final action, final decision, or final vote shall be either at the public meeting upon the reconvening of the public meeting or at a subsequent public meeting of the board upon notice thereof. As the board shall determine, a closed session of the board will now be held. The time is 7:12. The board is now in open session. The time is 8:36 PM. The next item on our agenda is item 10, legal. Consider proposal to terminate the probationary employment contract of Aaron Baker at the end of the contract term in the best interest of the district and authorize notice of termination. Ms. Gladys.
Mr. President, I move that the probationary contract of Aaron Baker be terminated at the end of the contract term in the best interest of the district and to authorize the superintendent to provide notice to Ms. Baker.
We have a motion?
A second, a motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I will abstain as my wife is an employee at that campus.
Very good. That is duly noted. Any other discussion? All right, I call the vote. All those in favor? All those opposed? And any abstentions? Very good. Motion passes. Thank you. And item 10B, receive local policy manual update 116 and revision of BQA and EIE local.
Thank you so much, President Hubert. You all received, I know you, some of you have seen so many updates. For some of you, this is your very first local policy manual update. How exciting, so I'm sure you spent hours reading those updates. And there were very few local policy changes in there, but we included the red lines of those, so you could see the recommended changes, and none of them were very exciting, I hate, I hate to say. The local, I mean, the legal policies, you know, are not adopted by the board. They are merely restatements of the law and are included in the policy manual for clarity and completeness in whatever topic they address. And so those were prompted by really administrative regulations brought about from the last legislative session. We're in the next one, and those, those new regulations went into effect in January of 2021 prompting the changes to legal policies. So there are a few local policies that are included in this one. The changes to those are summarized in your agenda item. They're really mostly for clarity, clarification. We've added two additional local policies, BQA, which is the district-level process. That one is really just tweaks to make sure that our policy actually reflects what our practice has been, and so that's just kind of a little cleanup. And in policy EIE, which is our grading policy, we expanded the language to give us some more flexibility on how we are grading students or reporting that, so that depending on what changes we might want to make in the future regarding grading at lower levels, we're able to do that with a policy that allows for that. And so next month, I'll be coming back asking for you to adopt the local policies that are in this update, and then they'll become, you know, the law of the land in Conroe ISD if you adopt them. Is there any questions? Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Gladys. All right, last item is to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion, second?
Sure.
All those in favor?
Thank you all.